All right, Mr. Chairman, it's it's recording and it is live streaming on YouTube right now.
Thank you, sir. April 28th, 2020 at 5:00 PM, I would like for the planner to read a statement from the governor, which allows us to have this meeting on YouTube.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county attorney has asked us to read this into the record at any public meetings that we might be holding. I'll go ahead and read this. The April 28th, 2020 meeting of the Sumner County Regional Planning Commission is being held pursuant to the numerous executive orders issued by the governor, which allow for meetings to be held by electronic means. The agenda has been posted fully online on the county website, and citizens were asked to submit comments by email. Any comments received were forwarded to all committee members prior to the meeting. A recording of this meeting will be posted on the county website within the statutory timeframe.
Thank you, Josh. At this time, I will ask Kathy if she will to give us a roll call, please.
Billy Gendin.
I'm here.
Thank you. Mike Honeycutt?
Here.
Jerry Kirby? Jerry Kirby?
Yeah, I'm muting. Mr. Kirby, can you hear us?
I hear you.
Thank you. Gene Rhodes?
I'm here.
Chris Taylor?
I'm here, Kathy. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Tucker?
Present.
And Jim Williams?
Not present. Mr. Williams was not able to to attend this video meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. With that, I declare we have a quorum. The first item on the agenda would be the minutes of February meeting that were not in meeting in March, so we would be approving February minutes. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
This Billy, so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving those minutes, please roll call Kathy again, please.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Oh, you provided the second. I apologize. Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. Passed unanimously.
Thank you, Kathy. The next item would be the approval of the April agenda. I think with the email we received today, I think item one has been deleted. Is that correct, Josh?
Yes, sir. I have not heard anything additional from the applicant on that one. They've requested they're requested it be removed. I asked for clarification as to whether that was a deferral or a withdrawal. I didn't hear back. So we're gonna have to take that as a withdrawal. They have to turn in a new application the next time that they submit.
I will entertain a motion to approve it with that withdrawal. I have a motion from someone.
Move to approve. Billy.
Second.
The motion was made by Mr. Gremenden, and I think it was second by Jerry Kirby?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, set motion, please. Vote. Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Mr. Who?
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
And Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. The first item on the agenda is Cook 76 acre sketch plat represented by Mr. Graves. Steph, comment, and we'll see if Mr. Graves has any comments after that. Steph, comment, please.
Yes, sir. I want to share my screen with you guys to to get to the to the presentation. Can everybody see? Is everybody's screen show Sumner County Regional Planning Commission presentation there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, the the first item, first item on the to discuss on the agenda is a sketch plat presented for subdivision called Cook 76 acres. And this is a five lot subdivision of a larger 25 acre tract located on on State Route 76. It's zoned agricultural. Is there can there is anybody's view change?
Nope.
Okay.
Good.
Project surveyors, Richard Graves, project engineers listed as Andy Lee on this one. This is the sketch plat that's been turned in by the applicant here. You can see these are the the five lots here. This is the there's there's an area floodplain behind it. Just to the north of the of the property, northeast of it, you have the Red River flows here. And there's another creek that flows here. It's an unnamed creek, but it flows here on the to the the west of the of the lots here. And this is an aerial of the of the property. This is a street view here, just to kind of show what it looks like. As I mentioned, there's a creek. You can't really see it here, but there's a creek back behind it. There's a creek over here to the north, the Red River that flows through here. The property is has got a considerable amount of floodplain contained in it. When you look at our assessor site, when you see something that's in the floodplain that's that's shown as yellow, what what you'll see some that are red and some that are yellow. When it's yellow, what it's what that means is that we don't really know what the flood elevations are. There's no base flood elevation that's defined for it. And so what that means for us is that we we really don't know exactly where the floodplain is because they've never been formally surveyed. And so there's probably some margin for error on exactly where those are. Hydrate sort of picked it on the sketch flat. White House Utilities is a utility provider. We'll need a hydrate to be installed for these. If they can't install one, then they can do an equivalent contribution to the county for for to further the goal of fire protection. Adequate right of way shown along State Route 76. The proposed lot width meet all the requirements. As far as next steps, they'll need to receive preliminary and final plat approval from the planning commission. We'll need drainage calculations, so erosion prevention sediment control plans and stuff when that with the preliminary plat. Now, one of the things, we've had several discussions with the the project surveyor on this one with the property owner. We've requested that these lots, because they are adjacent to floodplain where we really don't know where those flood elevations are. We've asked that those these be labeled as critical lots. There's probably some flooding susceptibility there in that area. And so what what that means when something's labeled as a critical lot, it just requires an additional plan to be turned in for the for each building lot when they apply for a building permit, which could require it to be elevated or, you know, or or maybe basements can't be installed, that kind of thing, to keep them to keep them from flooding. We put the critical lot stuff in the subdivision regulations when the new ones were adopted. We had a lot of lots that have been approved over the years that we seem to get water in the houses and get water in the garages and that kind of thing. And they're not in the floodplain. And so this is just a way of kind of catching those and making sure that they get some analysis and that if they need to be elevated or if we need some additional protections for future property owners, we can get those in there before we turn loose that building permit and it's too late. And so what would have to happen is a separate plan would have to be turned in when they apply for a building permit, showing the building envelope and what the elevation's got to be for the floor and all that stuff. And there's been some discussion, Mr. Graves, I don't know if it's still the the homeowner's request to kind of challenge that, that we would label those as critical lots. But I've got that in the staff presentation that 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 has been requested that we we not have that designation on those on those lots. And we do. We do feel like it is something that that's there to protect the future property owners and make sure that the staff catches that. It's prominently displayed on the plat as a star on those lots to to make sure that that we know that that additional work needs to be done on those lots before a house gets built on.
I'm thinking. But I'm sorry, go ahead.
And this is just this is just from the the subdivision regulations where we're it it allows us to request, you know, that to designate certain lots as critical, if we feel like they're flood prone, if they're on very steep topography and that kind of thing. Mr. Chairman, there's example motions there on the screen. The motion would be to, you know, to approve it would be that they just need to turn in their drainage plans and all that stuff with the with the preliminary plat when it gets turned in, and there's a example motion be there would would be to depict a mass critical lots and put that in the in the motion to approve the sketch plat. The example motions two and three would be to either approval without any conditions at all or to deny.
Yes, thank you. Does Mr. Graves, you have any comments as it relates to this?
Yes, after the meeting with Mr. with Josh and Richard Jones, we're we're gonna add, we're gonna add the critical lot designation and and especially the the no basements and three foot above the highest adjacent grade and finished floor. Don't think I with the floodplain, we did not put floodplain on these lots. So I think with the critical lot plan won't be a will not be a big deterrent now. Okay? So we're okay. We're okay with motion number one.
Then when you heard Josh's recommendation, well, you heard Josh's comments, we have sample emotions. Is there any questions from Mr. Graves or from Josh? Being none, I entertain would like to entertain one of the three motions.
Motion to approve number one.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second, this Billy.
Okay, the motion has been made properly. Second, the member, motion item one. Is there any questions? Ben, Kathy, would you roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, approved.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. The next item, item three, Fern Valley Springs. Steph, comment, please.
Sir. Next item is for consideration is a final plat for Fern Valley Springs. This subdivision was formerly called the Light Property. When it was initially submitted a few months ago, it's been changed to Fern Valley Springs at this time. Four lot subdivision of a five acre tract on Shun Pike and Fern Valley Road, Zone Residential A. There's a little bit of wetland that's shown on the site. The applicant and applicant representative have done some analysis on that and submitted information to us that that's not a wetland that so that that TNEC would have concerns with and we're satisfied with that explanation. It's owned by Stanley and Gale Light, project surveyors, Richard Graves, and engineer Andy Lee. This is just an aerial of the property. You see, there's this little piece of wetlands on there. We didn't use to really pay much attention to that. TNEC brought it to our attention that we needed to pay a lot more attention to it a while back. And so we do now. We try to make sure that that we clarify on the record what status those wetlands have, and that one's good to go per the applicant. This is the sketch that was initially turned in. This is the preliminary plat that was approved back a few months ago. And this is the the final plat. You can see the four four lots there on Fern Valley and Shun Pike. Drainage plans have been approved by the county engineer. EPSC plan has been submitted and it's good to go as well. It doesn't look like drainage improvements are going to be required on this one. We're having them satisfy the the water quality components of the county stormwater resolution rather than installing treatment ponds and that kind of thing. County engineers wanted to get away from that as much as they can on individual lots. And what that'll do is it'll involve keeping a lot of the front yards in grass and designated as green space. Might be some other minor improvements that be made to the soil, but that'll satisfy the water quality treatment stuff that we have to do. Utilities, fire protection, it's got a fire hydrant in place already, roads and lot widths and all that meets requirements. Adequate right of ways dedicated. One, the only outstanding issue on this one is it's within the suburban place type on the county's comprehensive plan. The applicant had had agreed to to provide a $3,500 payment in lieu of a fee on that in lieu of installing sidewalks, which will be required for the comprehensive plan on Shun Pike. It specifically says that they're required there. And so that in lieu of payment could be, it's something the county side down the books for a long time, the ability to take those funds, and they can be utilized for other walkability improvements and that kind of thing that the county might want to do in the future. This is this just shows where it says that Shun Pike is required to have is required to have have those sidewalks, as I mentioned, and in the subdivision regulations, we're allowed to have that that in lieu of fund. Mr. Chairman, the example motions there, as I said, the all the other conditions have been have been satisfied at this time with the exception of receiving that that $3,500 in lieu of payment, which we would we would hold my signature until six times we get that from them.
Thank you, Josh. Mr. Graves, you heard Steph's comment. Do you have any comments about Steph's comments?
No, I don't. I one, I do want to add one thing. The we sent the soil scientists back out to to locate and look at that wetlands areas, and I just, we just sent the soils map, the updated soils map to to Josh. It's about 500 square feet, I think, you put in your notes. So I think it's minimal. It's just right there at the head of that culvert out in the right of way and just a little bit, very little bit up on the property. So we will, we'll just go around that with a buffer.
Okay, thank you, sir. Gentlemen, we have three motions before you. I entertain a motion for someone to approve one, two, or three. Could I receive a motion?
Yes, sir. I'll make one to approve with the first one.
Item. There a second?
Second.
Okay, would you identify yourself as you make those motions just for Kathy's sake?
Sorry about that, Mr. Kim. That was that Chris Taylor making the motion.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any? Mike Honeycutt, second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Is there any questions? Being none, all in favor, bad habits are hard to break. At this point, okay.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Gomend?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you. Motion passes. The next item is Blackbird Trace Phase Two, preliminary plat, preliminary major request for a lot with variance. Mr. Bridges would be representing this client. Steph, comments, please.
Yes, sir. This item, this came before the planning commission back at our our last in-person meeting that we did back in March. It's a it's a basically a three lot subdivision, and it comes with it a a request for a variance from the lot width requirements we have on the books for collector roadways, which require 150 foot minimum lot width. This one was deferred back at that time in in February. I think there were some questions the planning commission had at the time, and the applicant representative wasn't in attendance in order to 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 discuss. And so so it was just, it was just deferred. And so what this would do, this would be essentially, it would continue subdivisions that we we've seen along this side of Douglas Bend Road. And this would, it would be a three lot subdivision near a beacon court there and Douglas Bend Road continuing that pattern of the road frontage development. Right now, there are no additional plans for for future development for the rest of the lot, but I think the property owner acknowledges that at some point, that's likely to be something that happens. Silver service isn't available down there just yet, so it's a it's something that it might be a ways off. It's Zone Residential A, project surveyors, Steve Bridges, the project engineer, Scott Foster. There was a sketch plat turned in for this was proposed here back some years ago. I don't believe it was ever approved. It was, it's been provided by the applicant representative. And as I said, it was deferred at the last planning commission meeting in February. This is the the subdivision as it's as it's proposed here. The planning commission, bear remember, there's a road stub that's that's been proposed here adjacent to it. These lots, the gist of the variance that's requested, they need to be 150 feet wide. You can't get three lots there at 150 foot lot width, so they're around 100 feet, which is to 130, which is less than that minimum. And this is the old sketch plat I was talking about that was approved some time ago. This is an aerial view of the property. And this is the area that's proposed for subdivision here, as I said, over near Beacon Court. They've turned in an EPSC plan that will need additional information on that for water quality and that kind of thing before it can be approved by the county engineer. This is the EPSC plan that was turned in. There's a fire hydrant in place already along Douglas Bend Road that'll serve these lots. I got adequate right of way depicted. As I mentioned, it doesn't meet the lot width requirements for urban minor collectors. The lot widths are about 130 feet wide. That is a way of kind of making up for this, what the applicant proposed to do, as I said, was they've got a future right of way that they're gonna go ahead and show on this plat to get into the lot. It parallels Beacon Corridor or kind of ties in with it across the road. As you can see here, this is the 50 foot future right of way that's 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 proposed here. That would kind of box in this development. As I said, it's it's that is an urban minor collector. And this is where the we had a study session in February as well on on potential changes to some of these regulations. You can see here where collector streets have 150 foot minimum lot width. So there's regulations state that variances can be granted if if there's practical reasons why they need to have one. But if one, if you grant the variance would undermine the intent of the regulations, you probably shouldn't do it, is what it says. Same thing on this one as far as the sidewalk payment. They would owe $3,700 on this one. And Mr. Chairman, there's example motions there. The motion to approve would require approval from the county engineer of construction plans for it. Construction inspection fees be paid and and the sidewalk in lieu of payment. So as I said, approval of this would be what's requested is approval of the plat, the preliminary plat itself, and granting them that variance to do the lots the way that they're proposing to do. And Mr. Chairman, the the applicant representative, Mr. Bridges, is in attendance tonight virtually.
Thank you, Josh. Mr. Bridges?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You have any comments as it relates to this project?
No, none other than we're asking for the variance just so we can line up the road going across there. Otherwise, we could make the lot width.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to get it on the floor, because I think we're gonna have lengthy discussion on this one. So a motion, please, one of the one, two, or three for us allowed to get this on this floor so we can discuss it.
Mr. Chairman, this is Chris Taylor. I'll make the motion for discussion purposes right now.
Which which item?
Number one. How about that?
Okay, the motion been made, number one, by Mr. Taylor is their second.
Jerry Kirby, second.
Mr. Kirby, second set motion. We have a motion on second. Now we can enter discussions. What are the pros and cons of this variance? And how does it relate to other variances coming before the board?
Was that a question for me, Mr. Chairman? Yes. Oh, well, as far as the the pros and cons, I mean, it's a, you know, it, as as we discussed in that study session a while back, you know, the 150 foot lot width is something that's been put in the it's been put in the subdivision regulations for a few months now. And I believe the applicant is, you know, as as I mentioned, they're they're looking to show that they are doing some planning on this lot by going ahead and showing that road stub adjacent to the proposed lots. You know, it's 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 you know, it's ultimately be up to the planning commission as to whether you wanted to grant variances on these kinds of requests and let folks have narrower lots or or stick to that.
Could could we see the slide of the road stub again, please?
Yes, sir. Can everybody say that?
Did didn't, did it not say that there were no plans for development behind it? Or did it not?
Yes, sir. That's that's correct. At this time, there's not necessarily plans. Like I said, I think it's it's acknowledged that 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 at some point, the rest of that property is going to develop. I think Mr. Bridges would agree with that. But but as of right now, there's not an active plan that's been worked on to to go ahead and develop the rest of it.
I think with a setback on the the side road or the road stub with the with the setback, that makes that lot even a lot, the buildable part of it a lot more narrow even. Anyway, it's my comment.
Mr. Chairman, may I, Jerry Kirby, may I make a comment?
Yes, sir, please.
I've had some people ask me and just recently in rural Summer County about a variance with road frontage also from 150 to 120. So I I don't know if that's something we want to address from time to time on a one-on-one basis, or we don't want to stick our guns.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, this is Tom Tucker.
Yes, sir.
I sound like a broken record, but we spent a lot of time over a year, year and a half of working up all kinds of sections of the the new code and everything. And I see the validity in this right here. But I also see it as when we break the precedent, you know, we set the precedent of of giving into this. And we had earlier said in our study sessions, and when we looked at the first and second draft of of the rules, that there were certain things that we just not ought to cave into with collector roads and major arterial roads. And I don't have any particular angst against this proposal right here. But my point is, is if we allow the variance, then as Jerry was just talking, it's going to be other people coming up. Well, we want a variance. We want a variance. We want a variance. That's my only point. I have nothing against the development, but I'm I'm looking at the precedent thing. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This Mike Honeycutt, I I just want to make a comment that I totally agree with Mr. Tucker. I'm just afraid if we if we start these, it's going to be case after case.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other comments? I think that maybe at one of the work studies of one of the meetings, I think the planner had so that we would be consistent around the county. He had mentioned maybe classifying particular roads in rural areas that would allow for it. And if it fell within those rural areas with those particular roads, then we could be consistent throughout the county. I don't know if Josh would like to speak to that or if it's even interesting at this point for him to to talk about that. It's up to the commission.
It's something, I mean, it's something we could definitely draft some some changes to the to the regulations. If that's what the planning commission wants us to do, that's that's absolutely something. As long as y'all just direct me to to get to work on it, I'll be be glad to put something together that that shows that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
This is Chris Taylor. Unless somebody else has discussion, if it's all right with you, since we've discussed it, I would like to withdraw my motion for approval. So it was mainly done just for discussion, and I agree with everybody. We've said we're good, that's impressive. I think the way you said it is by saying no.
The individual that gave the second, which you withdraw on your second?
It's Jerry Kirby. Yes, I withdraw this second.
The motion second's been withdrawn. We back to square one. The three items is the next item is to approve the preliminary plat to deny.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mike Honeycutt.
Mr. Chairman, this, this is Mike Honeycutt. I'm making a motion to deny.
Is there a second?
Chris Taylor.
Excuse me. Chris, was that you?
Yes, sir. Chris Taylor. I'll second the motion to deny.
Motion's been made and properly second to deny. Is there any, any other discussions? Be a non, roll call Kathy, please.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Gomind?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Roll call is done.
Thank you. Uh, item was denied. Next item would be, uh, 595 Shun Pike lot width variance. Staff comments, please.
Sir.
Uh, this is another request for a variance, um, from, from those same lot width requirements. We had a bunch of those that came to the planning commission in February. Um, this item was deferred at that time as well. I think Mr. Graves wasn't able to be in attendance that night. Um, and so it was, uh, that one was deferred. Uh, the zoning on this one's agricultural. It's located on Shun Pike, which is a collector roadway. Um, that, that requires those 150 foot widths if you're gonna get sole access off the, uh, the, the collector road. Um, this is a, a sketch that was turned in basically, uh, on this one, uh, that shows what proposed there. Here we go. Yeah. And so, uh, it's, it's classified as a rural minor collector or the ma- uh, major thoroughfare plan. Um, the sort of separated, as I mentioned before, they encourage developers to, to avoid direct cuts onto it if other mains access are available. Um, and it, and if, if you can't get other access, then it sets 150 foot lot width requirement. Uh, the proposed lot widths on these two lots are 172.5 and 124.7 feet. Um, that, that they're asking for variance for the other lot there that's 124 feet. Um, and, and as I mentioned, 150 feet would be required if the, if the regulations were followed. This should show where that road is, is classified as a, as a minor collector. Um, this is the same thing from the subdivision regulations and, and grounds for a variance here. Um, if they, if the planning commission approves this request for a variance, then a plat could be turned in by the applicant's representative and it can be done administratively. Uh, Mr. Chairman, there's a couple of examples, whether to either approve or deny the, uh, the, uh, request for variance.
Thank you. Mr. Graves, you representing this item?
Yes.
You have any comments?
I do. Uh, lot, uh, lot number two will not have direct access on, on the Shun Pike. They will be required to use the same driveway, uh, uh, the driveway that's existing, uh, on the 174 foot lot. So we are not asking for direct access for a lot, it may be lot two A. I can't see it. I'm sorry. Josh, can you?
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can, uh, can zoom in on it just a little bit.
I'll get. I apologize. I wanna make sure I get the right lot number.
Lot, lot two C is the bigger one, 172 feet. Lot two B is the smaller one.
Yeah, lot two B will be forbidden to build their own driveway. In other words, they will have to share the driveway that's existing on the 174 foot lot. The house was actually, you know, situated south, so far south, we, we could share that driveway. So we will not be accessing lot two B on the Shun Pike.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Uh, Josh is, uh, would you digest that for the members and myself?
Um, well, it's a, I think it's a, it's an effort to, to, to comply with the spirit of the, uh, of, of what's proposed or what the, uh, the subdivision regulations call for there. Um, what, what they say is, you know, that, that lots deriving sole access, uh, to an arterial or collector, uh, shouldn't have lot widths of less than 150 feet. That's basically what it says. Um, and so this is, uh, a way of minimizing driveways essentially to, uh, to reduce the number of curb cuts and access points onto the, uh, onto the collector road.
Thank you. Members, you've heard, uh, staff comments. Uh, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I've got a question. So would, would the one lot give an easement into the, the second lot, or how, how would this shared driveway work?
Yes, uh, yes, uh, Mike, that, that is true. The lot, lot two C will, uh, grant an access, uh, they'll have a shared access to the driveway and by deed and by plat, lot two B will not be allowed to build it, build another, there will not be allowed another curb cut on Shun Pike. There'll be a perpetual maintenance agreement and, and, uh, access just over that one driveway, existing driveway.
So is it a gravel driveway or concrete drive or paved drive or what is it?
It, it is right now, but I believe that, that the, the person buying it is Brad Edwards. And I, I feel like he would be amenable for the first 30, 40 feet to where we separate those driveways to concreting that. I believe that would be, that would not be an issue.
Oh. This is, this is Leah. Can I make a statement here?
Yes.
Richard, can there be something put down in writing where it's made very clear that that's the case? I've had phone conversations all week with people that didn't realize they shared driveways. I just wanna make sure that's perfectly clear to people when they go and search the record that that's the case.
Yes, I, I feel like we, we've done these before. These issues are coming up, like Josh said, more and more in, in trying to limit curb cuts. So we would actually put it on the faces of the plat. Uh, we could even put it in a enclosed, a box around a note on the plat to bring attention to it. And we could also, uh, put it in the deed as a, I can type the description and, and if y'all require it, to make it a part of the deed so that it won't be missed.
A- absolutely. That's, that's excellent because like I said, I just, I know people get told these things by real estate agents, but sometimes they don't remember what they were told.
We agree.
And they get upset a year later when their shared driveway becomes a battleground, so.
I, I would probably, I would think we could increase the size of the lettering of that note and even draw a box around it. We did, we draw a box around the driveway permanent process now on our plaits, on our plaits for the Sumner County Highway Department. So we would do that for this note and, and increase it to a larger type so that everybody know that they share that driveway.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you.
Chairman, one of the things, I think the reason this is came, this came up is because there was a, a subdivision out on Dobbin Spike that I think we hinted to the, to the developer that we would allow the shared driveways, uh, some couple, three months ago. I don't know how that materialized, but that was one of the solutions that was, that was given at that time from the body. So I think that's where this, this thing has grown from, not grown, but where this idea of shared drives has came from.
Could, could I make a comment?
Yes.
This is Billy. Um, that if we did, that could have been a mistake and two mistakes don't make a right either. I haven't seen very many shared driveways at work. And that's just, um, just my comment. I, I, I do think they become a battleground more than they do something good.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, this is Chris Taylor. Can I, uh, make a comment also, sir?
Beg your pardon, I didn't hear you.
This was Chris Taylor, sir. I was just gonna add to what Mr. Gomind said. I, I think if we're gonna go down this road, no, really clearly, they need it to the driveway for the upkeep, uh, any damages that happen, things like that. I, I, I don't, I think it's a lot more than just saying that they both know it's a shared driveway. I think the builders or someone needs, someone at some point needs to say, here's who's responsible for it. Here's how you're responsible and what a portion of the other person might have. I, I, I think like Mr. Gomind said, otherwise it's just, it's, it's gonna be something that we're gonna have problems for the courts later on and clogging them up for civil matters.
Well, at this point, do you think the wheel is to, to move forward or, or try to prepare some language that would take care of those items? What is the will of the body?
This is Tom Tucker. I have, I have a problem that when we wrote the new regs, we, we stated in no case, you know? And in no case to me means in no case. Uh, it has been a problem all along. And if we give in, I don't wanna say give in, but just relinquish the, you know, what, what we've written down and what Josh and the rest of the body have worked so hard on. And we capitulate from that all these times. It's just gonna go through the county like a grass fire and people will know, oh, hey, we'll grant a variance, we'll do this. So I particularly, uh, it might be able to work, but I see the shared driveways and things like this as a, trying to fit a square peg in a round hole.
Thank you for your comment.
This is Gene. I, I would like to agree with that as well. So just put that for the record.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we, uh, not approve this.
The motion's been made.
Chris Taylor, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Second, Tom Tucker.
So the motion is, is, is item two to deny the request for the variance. Uh, is there any questions? Be a non, Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Gomind?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the roll call is finished.
Thank you. Motion fails. Uh, next item, re-sub of lot one of King Acres, road frontage variance request. Mr. Bridges, uh, represents this item. Uh, staff comments, please.
Yes, sir. This is another variance request. It's a little bit different as opposed to something like lot width. Um, this, this gets something that, uh, it's a request for a variance to something that's really much more, uh, fundamental and, and longstanding in the, uh, the county's regulations. Uh, this is a request for basically to, to allow a new lot to be created, a new building lot that doesn't have any physical road frontage at all. Um, this is, this is a proposed two lot subdivision on this 4.68 acre, uh, lot. It's not on Shun Pike. That's a typo. It's on Jenkins Lane. Uh, project surveyors, uh, Steve Bridges, what it, what it would do, like, as I said, would allow the applicant to create a new lot that doesn't have any road frontage, um, in order to build a single family home. Um, this is the proposed lot configuration. Uh, you can see, uh, it's, it's turned north is, is down on this, the way it's configured on the plat. Um, the, uh, existing home is on what will be proposed lot one. Um, there'd be a new lot created up here, uh, and it would have a, an easement over top of another lot in order to get to the road. Um, this is an aerial photo. So what the subdivision regulations, what they say, um, on, uh, on this situation, they say that no new lot may be created, which does not continuously abut at least one public street for at least 50 feet. An easement shall not satisfy this requirement. And it also says no building shall be erected. So that means you can't build a lot, or you can't create a new lot or put a new building, your house, on a lot that, uh, that doesn't have road frontage for at least 50 feet. Um, and these rules go back, they're not new. This is, this is in the new subdivision regulations, but they were in the old ones too. And so back in the nineties, I think the planning commission at that time and the county commission as well, they really, they really worked hard to put some new rules in place in the zoning code and in the, uh, the subdivision regulations to get their arms around this. Cause you had a, a real proliferation of, of acre lots that were being cut off, whole subdivision of acre lots, and none of them had physical road frontage. And so yet, a lot of problems arise as a consequence of that. Um, lots of fights and lawsuits and the county getting dragged into lots of, lots of these issues. So the planning commission back in those days, they decided to put something in the subdivision regulations that said, you know, you can't, you can't erect a new building if you don't have road frontage on anything under five acres, which is what we have the authority to regulate. And so we've kept that requirement. Um, and it's, uh, it's, it's, it's worked pretty well. We've, we've enforced it hundreds, probably thousands of times in the last, you know, 30 years since, since those rules went into effect, 20 plus years. Um, and, you know, it, I don't often, you know, state bluntly statute position on anything, but approval of this variance would be something that would, I think it would really undermine our ability to regulate a lot of that stuff. Um, it, and it would, um, I think you, you definitely would have a proliferation of a lot of new lots that are being created without road frontage, uh, which is something that we're, we're still untangling a lot of those knots from 20 plus years ago at this time. And so that's, that's what they would be requesting. It's something that the staff would have some reservations about seeing begin again. Um, subdivision regulations, as, as I say, with the other ones, um, variances can be approved if they wouldn't have the intent of undermining the whole heart and soul of the regulations. And I think this one, this one would, I mean, uh, approval of this one, I know it is family members involved, but, um, but it, it is, the approval of this, of this variance would make it difficult for us to, to enforce much of anything when it comes to road frontage. It's a, it's a question, and Kathy can probably back me up on this. It's a question we, we, we get asked a dozen times a day. It's, it's, that's not an exaggeration. I mean, it would lead to a proliferation of landlocked parcels if we started, started doing that. Um, so the next step, if this variance was approved, I mean, it can be submitted as a, as a subdivision plat, um, that can be approved administratively by staff if, if this variance is granted by the planning commission. Um, and Mr. Chairman, there's example motions there to either approve or to, uh, to deny this request.
Thank you, Josh. Uh, Mr. Briggs, uh, is there, do you have any comments as it relates to staff's comment?
No, we don't have any comment on it. This was something that, uh, the family was trying to add something that was similar to a in-law suite, but in reverse, it was for their son who was raising their two grandkids and living in the house with them. This was just their, they asked to at least try to see if they could do this, and that's what we're trying to, you know, and that's why we brought it before y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Chris Taylor, um, I certainly understand, empathize with those people, but, uh, this is pretty an easy one. I'd make a motion that we deny their request.
Is there a second?
Second, this is Mike Honeycutt.
Okay, the motion is, is made to deny, uh, Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Gomind?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the roll call is finished.
Thank you. Motion, the motion passes to deny this request. Uh, item seven, Jake Link Farms preliminary plat represented by Mr. Graves. Staff comments, please.
Yes, sir. This is one that's come up, uh, uh, previously to the planning commissioner. Back in 2019, it was submitted as a seven lot subdivision. Um, I think it's, it, it started as nine with an initial sketch, but I think there's been some soils issues and some other issues with the, with the lot. Um, zone agricultural doesn't appear to contain wetlands. Richard Graves is the, uh, project surveyor. Um, Jake Vincent is the, uh, is the project engineer on this one. Um, we haven't gotten construction plans yet on this from, from Mr. Vincent. Um, it's my assumption that he's gonna continue to be the, uh, project engineer on it.
Josh?
Yes, sir.
We would ask for deferral, please.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I can go ahead with the presentation here. We can, uh, if the planning commission want to act on the deferral.
Uh, I think, uh, if the request for defer and less than as objection, we'll just defer, uh, entertain a motion to defer.
This is Mike Honeycutt. Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second, to Gene.
Motion been made properly seconds. Any question? Roll call, please, uh, to defer. Kathy, please.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Gomind?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
And Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, the roll call is complete.
Thank you, Kathy.
And Mr. Chairman, just, excuse me, just to clarify for us, uh, at staff level, is this a, Mr. Graves, is this a 30-day deferral that you are requesting to make to bring it back at the, uh?
Yes, yes, yes.
Is there issue with that as it relates to the timeframes, Josh?
No, sir. If this is a voluntary deferral on that part of the applicant, it can, it can be deferred indefinitely with, uh, with the property owner's consent. Uh, we get into trouble if we, uh, at the staff or the planning commission level want to defer things on and on and on. State law won't let us do that, but if the applicant wants to defer, then that's, that's totally fine and they can do that for as long as they need to.
Thank you, sir. Item eight, last item, leaf, event, venue, site plan, uh, staff comments?
Yes, sir. This is a, this is something that's a little bit different. Um, it's, it's, there's been things in our zoning code for many years on these wedding venues and event venues. Um, as the, the planning commission may know, I know our legal folks certainly know, um, the wedding venues can sometimes get to be a little controversial around the county among the neighbors and, and various other issues. And what the, what the, uh, the zoning code actually says, and it's not ever been done, but it says that when, uh, when one of these wedding venues or event venues or similar rec- uh, when one of these wedding venues or event venues or similar recreation type uses comes to the board of zoning appeals for a conditional use permit, there's a site plan needs to be approved by the planning commission as well. And so that's what we're doing at staff level was bringing this one to the, uh, to the, to the planning commission, uh, to, to review, uh, for, for, uh, site plan, names of ingress and ingress and that kind of thing. Just to, to ensure that an approval was granted by the planning commission before it goes to the BZAC. Uh, this, this is an existing facility. It's all forty-seven point four acres. Uh, there's a fifteen acre minimum lot size that's required. Um, this meets that requirement. Uh, property owner is David and, and Reed the Leaf, uh, represented by Greenland Design Andy Leaf. Um, because this property doesn't have road frontage onto a county road, it, it, it exits out on a Cooley Town Road, which is a city of Westmoreland Road. Um, whenever we, you know, have things that cross jurisdictional boundaries, we like to have things that looked at by those other cities and that kind of thing. So I sent this over to the city of Westmoreland to the mayor, and he got it before their planning commission just to, to have a look at, to make sure that, you know, they're aware of it, um, that they understand that, you know, might be fire protection and that kind of thing they need to provide or, or could provide, uh, and that kind of thing. And, and so they did, uh, their, their planning commissioner reviewed it on February twenty-seventh. We got a letter from the city's fire chief, um, indicating that they were agreeable, uh, to gain an access from the city streets. And I believe the letter also indicated that they were amenable to providing fire protection for the, uh, for the venue as well, uh, in the event that that became necessary. Um, this is the, the subject property. You can see the, uh, the, the venue over here is an existing building, an existing agricultural building, um, that, that is going to be used for events and other, other purposes. And this is a site plan that was, that was turned in by the applicant. And here you can see, um, you can see parking and that kind of thing. It makes parking requirements. Um, uh, the, the applicant, Mr. Leaf, was actually good enough to, to go ahead and do some, some basic stormwater calculations as well. Obviously, it's a big rural lot and just for our records for TNEC and that kind of thing, we're able to confirm that it, that, uh, stormwater, uh, quality measures and that kind of thing are adequate. This is, this is going to take care of those. Um, no additional required improvements to the roads. The roads are the property of the city of Westmoreland. Um, no stormwater improvements, tree covers to be preserved. You won't be able to see this from the road. Uh, parking is adequate. Um, uh, if this is approved by the planning mission, it'll go on to the board of zoning appeals and get a conditional use permit. Um, and once they get their conditional use permit from the BZAC certifying that they meet all the zoning code requirements, um, they'll be able to get their land disturbance and any other permits that they might need to obtain from the county. And as I said, it's an existing agricultural building, so they might not need to obtain very many of them. Um, they have submitted building plans to the building codes office for review as well that were rendered by an architect and stamped as, as well. Um, and Mr. Chairman, there's example motions to approve a site plan for late event, uh, late event venue with a, a couple of, uh, conditions of approval.
Thank you. Mr. Leaf, you want to add anything to staff's comments?
No, sir. Uh, got, I'll answer any questions you may have, though.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Leaf, available for any questions, uh? Does the committee have any questions for Mr. Leaf? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mike Honeycutt.
Is there a second?
Jerry Kirby's second.
Is this for number one?
Yes, I'm sorry for, uh, motion number one.
Okay.
The second, you understand this is for number one?
Yes, sir. No, motion number one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions? Being none, Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Comenden.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes, ma'am. And Mr. Campbell and Josh, y'all did a fantastic job on this meeting.
Hey, Mr. Bratton, that roll call is complete.
Thank you. Uh, this concludes our meeting. I want to thank staff, especially, well, all of staff for helping us prepare for this meeting. Uh, hopefully this won't have to occur again, but if it does, we're ready to take care of the county's business. With that out, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, Tom Tucker.
I seconded.
Someone.
Tom made the motion, Billy seconded.
Okay, I have a motion on second. Is there any questions? Being none, all in favor of adjourned, roll call Kathy for the very last time tonight.
Mr. Honeycutt.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Kirby.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Taylor.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the roll call is complete.
Yep. Thank you for your patience and thank you especially Kathy. The meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good.